And I'll start with by turning on my microphone. We'll call this meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the.
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our April 8 Finance Committee meeting?
Second.
Motion by Dr. G., seconded by Mr. McBain. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. For our items that are for recommendation for work session and action, am I turning this over to you, Mr. Linderman?
It's up to you.
I'd be happy to. There you go.
I was waiting for the crowd to come in for the budget presentation, so I was going to go slow, but, okay. You have a resolution for which the North Penn Cheer Association to do the Small Games of Chance, they have to apply for that through the county, so we recommend approval for that or moving it on to the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Resh, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any questions or comments?
So I have a question about that because they're technically their own entity, so why do we need to do anything?
Well, they're tech. Go ahead.
Sure. Just a number of years ago, the Treasurer's Office started utilizing an interpretation of the Small Games of Chance Act that these organizations that are run the activities, the organizations that they benefit, need to recognize them and their benefit to the school district, for example. So this is not the board or the district taking ownership of the organization, it's merely recognizing that they are an organization whose activities benefit the district.
Okay.
And technically, in accounting lingo, they are a component unit of the school district. I mean, they are only in existence because of you, so it's.
That part I get.
So.
But.
But again, we had to do this for our, when I was in Great Valley, every time one of our organizations wanted to do those.
Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifties or, I call them rip-offs, that's what they call them, and they rip them off and you win or not, so, or they, so they do that. It's just a, it's pretty typical.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that question and thank you for, thank you, Mr. Summers, for that explanation. And we certainly do appreciate the work of our Booster Clubs to support our students. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Budget transfers.
You'll see two budget transfers and I'll have to take the blame for the March budget transfers, which you already looked at in March and I forgot to put on the March action meeting, so, my bad. If you want me to, if you want this to be my last meeting, it can be. Oh, wait a minute, it is. So, but, so I apologize and so we have them both on there. They're both pretty typical. They're getting a little larger because some of the technology things we're buying and stuff like that are in there, that's why they're, you see them be a little bigger. My guess is next month's will be even larger because you're going to see that intermediate unit charge we talked about at the special finance meeting will come, so that's it.
So can we do a motion and combine B and C for the month? So a motion and a second to approve the budget transfers for both March and April, so items B and C on board docs.
Just quick clarification, Mrs. Ramich, not to approve them, but to place them.
Place them on. Thank you. Thank you for that. So moved. Motion by Mrs. Stole, seconded by Mr. Fusco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review of liquid propane gas and filling station maintenance and bits.
My computer's stuck, but this is to approve the propane for next year for the bus fleet and if I could get to the, there we go.
If it helps, Mr. Linderman, I'm having the same issue.
Me too.
I wonder if something's wrong with board docs right now.
I have it open if somebody wants to look off my computer.
I got it open, but it's not showing me the attachment that I want to open, but anyway.
I have the attachment if that.
Yeah, me too. Here, will I take this over?
You can't, you can't. See, I got the, the bid, oh, here, wait.
Can I make room? Just use my computer.
There you go.
Look at, look at this teamwork though. This is great. Thank you very much.
It's working sort of. There you go. There we go.
You got it.
I got it. I got it. Finally.
That's what it ta, that's what it needed. It just needed us all to be moving around.
Okay. We're all set, Mr. Linderman. Take it away.
So we are, we recommend the approval of the bid to, for the tank move and the, the LPG, yeah, LPG tank, so as listed there, so if anybody has any questions, I.
Go ahead.
You have to do the bid for, or the motion first. Yeah, so we'll do the motion to put, to move this forward to our next meeting. Any motion and a second, please?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Resh, seconded by Mrs. Rudnick. Any comments or questions? Kathy?
Hi. So, Mr. Linderman, the, this, for the buses, the liquid propane, does, does it have flexibility in terms of as we bring more onboard, like, is there any synergy, like, cost reductions or this is a fixed?
As my understanding is, this is a fixed cost and it doesn't matter how many buses we add, they will still honor this cost.
Okay.
Normally they'll, they'll honor the cost. It does look a little higher than what we're paying last year, but again, it's still, it's a dollar a gallon versus what you guys are paying for at the pump for diesel or regular gas, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six real estate tax installment payments and penalty amounts.
I guess every year you approve the installment schedule, which, which we have listed there, and again, it's not coming up, but I do have that one printed out, so your installments go, go basically the last day of the month, six installments for the year, so we're recommending no change to that. You do have also in there to approve the penalty amount for people that are past October, and you had reduced it a few years ago to seven and a half percent. Up to you, you may or may not want to reconsider. You're one of the few that do that low amount, you're, it was a good thing with COVID, but it's kind of done and now the money you're losing by not charging the people that don't pay you on time really kind of charges you, the rest of you that pay on time because you're taking some money out of there to help them, but it's up to you. Just, I just point that out, that most schools are still at ten percent.
Do I have a motion and a second to move this forward to our next meeting? So moved by Mrs. McMurtry, seconded by Mr. McBain. Any questions or comments?
I just make sure I understand the motion. Is the motion to keep it at what it is or is the motion to move to ten?
Mr. Keep it, you would have to physically tell us and change your thing. Steve had made an estimate of about $120,000, you're, you're kind of losing in delinquent tax payments, which if you want to look at it from the ninety-six percent of the people that pay on time, you're giving a benefit to the people that don't pay on time, and that was okay for a while, but up to you.
I mean, I'll just put this out there that, I mean, given the hundred and twenty-three thousand that we, that could be generated from Mr. Schrocky's estimate, I mean, I do feel like we've, five years out from COVID, we've, you know, I think, tried to be, you know, considerate to people who were recovering from COVID. I think it's reasonable for us to be aligned with other districts and be at ten percent. Just some thoughts for others to consider because of the amount that we're losing and trying to be responsible with increased cost of things and everything.
And, I'm sorry, and if we did make a change, when exactly would that go into effect?
This year?
Immediately this year?
July 1st bills, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm comfortable making it change back close.
But is this the time that we would have to make the change?
Yes.
I'm asking that question to say, next year it would be at this time, then it would be the same thing. Do you know what I mean?
Right. We can lay the groundwork for our consideration.
You can, and I could note, we could note this to Tara, that next year when you come, you discussed this last year. I just bring it up as a, something for you to think about for the future.
There's certainly an option in between, right, Mr. Linderman? If we wanted to phase it in to eight point seven-five and then ten percent next year, so, you know, do it in two steps if you wanted to, entirely board prerogative.
You can, absolutely.
I, my two cents would be not to do it this year and to implement it next year, whether it's a phase in or we return to ten percent like the other school districts, but I'm not in favor of this year, for sure. Too much of a surprise in too short of a timeframe.
I think it, I think it does, I agree, Mrs. McMurtry, I think it merits a much, it merits more discussion and analysis, so I think having Steve's estimates is great, but I don't, I would love to have maybe a more formal presentation on the matter and what, how many people are, would possibly be forced to pay, I think we need to have a little bit more discussion is where I'm at with it. Mr. Resh?
And one thing I'd like to see in that discussion is who's impacted by the change, and I, that would be my biggest question. Thank you.
Mrs. Rudnick? Mrs. Stole?
Sure. I guess, because we have the more installments, it used to be that you had to pay either for the early discount, you had to pay by August 31st, right, and then you had to pay by October 31st to be flat, right, and then if you didn't pay by December 31st, you got the ten percent penalty, right? So now we have six installments.
Yeah, six installments.
And if you're late with one installment, if you're late with installment one, two, three, or four, then you're only penalized on an installment that you're late for, but if you've paid all five installments on time and then paid the last one late, you get penalized.
That, that's actually in the law. That's actually in Act One, when they allowed installments. They delineated that, that you would be penalized for.
For the whole thing?
The full amount.
If you're on, late on the last payment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, so that happened where I came from, too. You had one or two this year, maybe just one this year that happened to, but.
Right. Yeah, because that person emailed us and that's when I found that out. Okay. So is there any benefit to making it less installments, too, while we're at it?
Well, something for discussion next year, and we, I talked about it in the office, in our office, about doing it this year, is changing your installment timing a little bit. Might mean changing your budget adoption. Some schools, where I came from being one, we would make sure our budget was approved in early June and the bills were out before June 15th, and the first installment was the fifteenth of the month every, every month then, so that December 15th was the last installment was due, so that there was at least, you know, two weeks or more if somebody missed their payment altogether, that they, they could get told, this, this person that got missed and got leaned.
Right.
Because once you're missed and we don't know it until, you know, it comes out and failure for us to receive your, your, for a tax collector or us to receive your, your payment in the mail is not a reason that waives you any penalties, kind of like the IRS saying, well, well, I mailed it, but you just, the IRS just didn't get it, they're, they're not going to let you go. It's the same kind of rulings in the tax code for us for payments that kind of govern the IRS.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
Yes.
So with regards to this, if I'm reading this right, levying the seven and a half as opposed to the ten percent will result in approximately $120,000 reduction, which I understand was Dr. G.'s point. So if we are going to be looking at doing this next year, per what Mrs. Ramich said, it would behoove us to have a deeper discussion, but also I think we would need to start communicating to those that might be impacted sooner than later. So I don't want, I would recommend that we're not here next May having the same discussion, and the big part of it is, to Mr. McBain's point, the change management, right, that we haven't told people that this is going to happen. So it'd be great if we could sort of put it in their upcoming, like, the last three notifications they get or something for, you know, the six installments, maybe the last three, that says FYI, starting in July, if we decide to do anything, starting in July, you know, it's going to go back to the ten percent. I don't know if that's possible. I think, I'm just trying to problem solve.
Yeah, it's hard because we, I think there's a list here of installment payments for this year, and you only had 687 people pay by installment out of your 24,000.
Yeah.
So if you notified them, they're, they're, that's a much smaller percentage of people that are delinquent and paying the seven percent. My guess is on, on those, ninety-nine percent of them are paying without a delinquent.
Can you vote on it, can we discuss and vote on it earlier so that, to Mr. McBain's point, then we can communicate it earlier, so like?
Yeah, I'm just not sure without sending something fully out to every, every taxpayer saying it's going from seven and a half to ten percent. You know, the best you can do is probably include it in a very early budget discussion next February or so, and start kind of doing it then.
So I think discussing it as is, we can try to make sure that this happens in February or March of next year, before then, right? That's our, kind of our deadline.
Yeah, no, no.
But I also think with bringing on our new CFO and her coming in, maybe we want to also roll this into a larger review of.
Well, I, I think.
How the tax bills are sent out, like, we'll do a discussion and a review of all of that earlier in the year, work with her to then establish the timeline for when this could be added to a meeting next year.
And I think that's a, that's a great idea. And just remember that very few people pay the penalty. Most people pay on time, get a discount, or most people are paying it net.
And there's no assurance that the same people, we're talking about the same people year on year, so sending it to, you know, 480 people this year may not be the same 400, I mean, so at the end of the day, you send it to all, you follow a process, give them, socialize to the entire population what might be coming. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Berkheimer Earned Income Tax Resolution.
This is just to take, to add your new CFO and your new accounting supervisor as the kind of points of contact. Right now, it's, I believe, myself and Sandy are the two points of contacts from Berkheimer, so this will convert them like next week, and then they get all the notices and there's, you have to do this by, by the earned income tax.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to move this item forward? So moved. Motion by Mrs. Stole, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Thank you so much for your service and thank you for helping us with this transition. I, yeah, we appreciate that. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now what we've all been waiting for, the 2025, 2026 budget update.
Bill, you can let everybody else in that's waiting for this to come in. So not much has changed. We've made some adjustments to your, to your budget. Go onto the next slide. Tonight, what we need, we're going to give you a quick budget summary, and I guess said it, not much has changed since April. We'll try and point out what has, point out the potential tax impact, and we've asked a couple times and got kind of crickets here, but we're going to need some direction on the tax rate for your, you, you will need to approve your preliminary final budget next week, and then in June you will approve your final budget, so that's, that's what we need tonight is a little discussion on that. The next, so changed Steve's quote there a little bit, so on budgeting. Next slide. This is the budget comparison, and this is the, actually what your budget looks like. It's about an eight point one percent, an eight point one-five percent increase. It's a little bit inflated, we told you that last month, it's got a $10 million transferred to the capital project fund from your fund balance, so you don't have a corresponding revenue for that that's coming out of your fund balance. So your budget would be 348,735,000, about an eighteen thou, eighteen million, $700,000 increase, including the 10 million, so it's an eight point one-five percent increase. The next slide just simply shows if you didn't have the 10 million in there, it's about a five percent increase for, for what, what we will call your working budget from one year to the next that didn't include the capital improvement fund. The Act One index, this is a chart of, of the Act One index, last, last year it was five point three percent, this coming year it's four percent, so that's the most you would be legally allowed to increase your, your taxes, and you did vote on that way back with, when Mr. Schrocky was here to say you would stay within that limit. The trend over the next couple of years is kind of stagnant or decreasing, so that's done by the, the state has a, an office of financial something or other that they, the governor's office put in place many years ago to do estimates on this. So the estimates for the Act One index over the next several years are, are there, too. Your revenue breakdown, most of your revenue comes from local, local sources, mostly taxes, real estate taxes, transfer taxes, it's a little bit of investment revenue. State, you have basic subsidy, special ed subsidy included in the state subsidy is also, you get a reimbursement for retirement and social security paid for your, on behalf of your employees, and you have a very small sliver of federal funding there, and it's mainly your, your Title I and II and whatever the other federal programs you have. The next slide, this is your tax base history, you can, you see, if you go back to the left around 2008, nine, nine, 10, you had kind of a little bit of up and then it started to go down, it was stagnant. Talk about that, you had some increases over the years. Right now, it's sort of leveled out, but I will tell you that if, any drop in property values could trigger more tax appeals by homeowners and business owners, and that could then relate back to that 2000, what we all saw in 2010 and 11, where a great number of tax appeals that kind of reduced our tax base, a lot of, a lot of schools actually saw a reduction in their tax base, so just to keep yourself even, you had to have a tax increase, even if you didn't want one, because your tax base went down. Not happening now, you have a small increase this year, so, but just depends on how the housing values go. This is your investment earnings, we talked about this before, you, you're less than last year, but much better than your budget. Interest rates now are, last year this time were anywhere for that, the school was getting, were anywhere from five and a half to five and a quarter percent, now they're four and a half to four and a quarter percent. Little stagnant the past couple of months, but depends on what the feds do and the next, next time they meet, we'll see. That could, could lower you a little bit more, too. Your spending breakdown, no surprise, most of your three quarters of your budget is salaries and benefits. That's, shouldn't be a big surprise to, to, to all of you. The, you know, debt's a little four percent. I'll tell you, you have a very small debt pie. You know, ten percent is not out of the question, is what a lot of districts have, in the eight to 10 percent range. You will probably have to close in on that before you're done your building project because you're going to have to put some debt in place to, you know, you can save all the money you want, but it's kind of hard to buy a house with, with your passbook savings account, so. These are the expenditure drivers, I think I went over these before, so we did talk about utilities and, and talked about the electric and gas, we talked about the transportation. We talked about the charter schools, which, which are stagnant or maybe a little less, but the tuition rate is going up, and salaries and benefits, they're kind of tied right into your contracts. Next couple of slides talk about retirement expenses. This is actually dollar amount of retirement expenses, and, you know, we, we, we all keep that 2010 and actually earlier is even less, when the retirement rate was, was kind of, I would call it artificially depressed and had us paying next to nothing. There was a time when the retirement system was, was fully funded, that was back in, in the year like 1999, 2000, 2001, and the governor gave all of us employees a great increase in our pension benefit that they calculated on, and then next year they gave a big colat to everybody that was retired, and then the next year the economy started to go down and the, the investments started to tank. So this, that's why it went up, this is to get them back to, to a fully funded scenario. This is a percentage of your budget, you can see it's stagnating, so the rates have not gone up dramatically, so the percentage of your budget that as relates to retirement for your employees, actually gone down for next year. The next slide, and it's, I know it's very hard to read these, I should have made these bigger, but it kind of, these are the retirement rates, your employer rate, so next year you're, the employer share of retirement that you will pay on every employee that is on retirement is 33.9 percent. It was actually projected to be a little over 34, so it's less than what the Peasars actuaries projected, but, but still pretty high, and they re, they recalculate the out years then, too, so you can see they're, them going up. This, again, this actually could get impacted by what happens with the, with the market because the pension monies are invested kind of in the stock market and, and in equities and things like that, so they, you know, a, a big drop could mean some things happen to that, and next year's actuarial projection, which comes out in December for them. The fund balance slide, I talked about this last month a couple of times, so I won't talk about it again, same with the next, the fund balance slide, and the fund balance percentage. Couple charts here, we have your, your tax, tax rates, you are the fifth lowest in the county out of 20 schools in Montgomery County. I guess there's 21, but I don't think they count Brent-Athen as, as, as a school, so you're, you're not the lowest, but again, not near even the average. Your bond rating is, is next, I, a couple more things to follow up on the bond rating. One thing I failed to mention last month when I told you the bond rating is, when you get a bond rating that's, that's double A1 or higher, which is triple, triple A, those, those two are kind of natural bond ratings. Number one, you don't have to buy insurance for your bonds, which saves you a ton of money. Number two, your bonds become more attractive to buyers, so you can actually offer them up at a lesser rate, so a bond that may be paying somebody four percent because they have a, an A1 rating, not a double A1 rating, might only cost you three percent, so that impacts your debt service. So it's not unusual to be, say, this, this bond rating, over the life of your high school project, will save you hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars to maintain this rating, so it's my last porting, kind of, remember Chuck said that? So try and remember that. But, so it's good. Bond rating's good. Keep it up. This is your per pupil expense compared to everybody in the Montgomery County intermediate unit, so it's, it's basically just your total budget divided by your total number of, of students, and you are at the low end of that, too. You're, you're sixteenth out of 21 districts in, in your per pupil spending. The next chart's just to get these off of 4KS5, there are, that's our data analytic program that, that you have here, so this kind of shows, shows your, your. So this kind of shows, shows your, your, the state average, the regional average, the peer average, and then the, your, your district average. So the focus district would be North Penn. Special ed, same, same type thing. You are lower, on the low end of per pupil here, which is, is pretty good. So, and then the, the, the chart that we'll need a little direction on is your tax scenarios. So right now, you can do, if you did, did a, if you did a no, no tax increase, that means that tomorrow, Dr. Bauer and, and I would have to figure out how to cut eight and a half million dollars from the budget. 1%, same, a little bit different, 2%, 3%, 4%. You're actually in the, in the, in the black a little bit, but I think I said this last month, I'd recommend you consider going to the Act One Index because you have a lot of debt coming onboard, and this will help you. You can actually designate this toward fund balance and toward debt in the future. So again, I'm, I'm going to pause here and hope there's more discussion than, than we've had.
Just to give some more specifics to the, I think it was an early slide about the projected Act One Index. We don't know until the time comes, but it was all the way back on slide six. The most recent projections, there you go. For this year, of course, we know it to be 4%. For '26, '27, it's 3.6, 3.2, then 3.1 in '26, '27, '27, '28, and '28, '29 respectively. So, yeah, these updated figures are less than what you're seeing here. So 4.0, 3.6, 3.2, 3.1. So just to give you a perspective on where Act One is, and we all know about the high school project and the debt that we are taking on, so.
So just to help frame our discussion, we need to give you direction on where we're leaning towards on that tax rate so that by May 15th, we can adopt the proposed final budget. So that's our timeline, so.
No. You could, although it's, I'm sorry, you, you could say one thing for May 15th and say another for June, whatever. So I can't remember the date because it's, I call it AMT after my time. So, but, so, but you, you could do one, one right now and then say, okay, well, we want to do something else June the.
Okay. So we have between now and the 15th to kind of have a discussion, maybe use some of that time tonight. And then we'll adopt the proposed final budget on the 15th of May, and then we will adopt the final budget on June 18th.
Right.
So any questions or comments from the presentation? Mrs. Stoll?
Yeah, so I would say this year in particular, we have some more concerns of not only taking on the big high school project, but also not knowing how much money will be coming from the state because they don't know how much they're getting from the federal government. So because of that, in particular, I'm a little bit more concerned that we make sure that we have enough in our budget so that we're not stuck should the state not come through or the federal government not come through with their funding that they're supposed to give us. And unfortunately, we won't know because the state's supposed to have their fund, their budget done, I think, the end of June, and the state, and the federal government has theirs done in September. So we won't even know for months if we're going to get the funding that we're supposed to be getting.
The past couple of years, and I'm going to talk about it when we talk about our projections in, in the reports, but the past couple of years, you've, you've received more money from the state than, than you ended up projecting because it got better. I, I was at a conference last week, and I heard that Pasbo, Pennsylvania Association School Business Official Executive Director, who used to be a lobbyist and pretty heavy into there, talk about that this may be the first year, it will probably be the same, if not less, than what the governor proposed. So the past couple of years, it's been more. You've benefited from that, not a lot, but you've benefited. But this, this could be a year where they did not have big increases in there because there's other things to deal with. The, they, they have the, the equity formula that they've been dealing with, trying to give to these kind of poor and rural and school districts.
I don't think we've ever had the situation before where we're wondering if the state's going to get their money from the federal government.
No, no, and that's another thing too. That's absolutely, you're, you're correct.
So, yeah, I mean, so even though we don't get as much from the federal government, the money from the state.
And, and you know the state, if they say their budget is adopted early, that means it was adopted June 30th.
Right, yeah. I didn't realize the state gets 53% of their money from the federal government.
Just as we talk about our outlook and what we have informationally now to move on in the future, looking at that slide, I think it's the ninth slide on investment earnings. You know, we've enjoyed a tremendous amount of investment earnings over the last, say, four or five years. But certainly, we have to admit that there's been an awful lot of volatility in the market, and there's been an awful lot of trends that we didn't see coming, certainly. And so that gives me a little bit of pause because I'm not sure we can count on in the coming years, the same types of returns of 4 million, 6 million, even over 9 million in '23, '24. So I want to make sure that we keep that in mind as well as we look forward with what information we have now.
Thank you, Mr. McBain. Mrs. McMurtry?
Thanks, Mrs. Ramich. I totally agree with what Mr. McBain said. In fact, that was going to be a question because it's 6 million this year for the investment revenue, and we're, what, right now, 77% of our revenue comes from local, and that's where we see that 6 million. So that will start possibly to shrink. But I have a specific question. It's on, I think it's slide 15 for clarification. So when you, when the first line where it's inventory and prepaid items, are those pre, any of those prepaid, prepaid items part of the high school project?
No.
Okay.
This is all general fund.
Okay. So when we do the budget for next year, will we see prepaid items or long lead items included in any of this at all, or the high school project will be a completely separate presentation as part of the budget for transparency and understanding? And I don't even know if that question can be answered now.
It, it sort of can. I mean, I can tell you that this, the only thing in your general fund budget that you're seeing tonight that will be impacted by the high school project next year is whatever additional debt you add and the payment, repayment of that debt. So, you know, we have new debt this year. You did the 10 million, you know, that's factored in for next year. Whatever new debt you do next year, and you'll have to do new debt for the, for the high school project, that will have to be laid in as a, as a line item. So whether it be, you know, it's probably going to have to be more than 10 million next year, it's going to have to be, you know, 30, 40 million dollars, whatever you need, I mean, for your next phase, but.
And again, I, maybe that's a premature question, Dr. Bauer, but how that budget is integrated into the overall budget so we can see the whole picture across the district? Just, okay, thank you.
It will be its own separate budget, is what I want, is what, is what I meant.
I, I understand that part of it, but in somehow, I think it needs to be also presented as part of this, particularly when we're looking at Act One Index information and helping us as a board to make a decision.
It's been quite some time since we had our financial advisors come in and show the full modeling of it. So we could certainly get that updated and have a presentation at a finance meeting.
Yeah, that's actually a great idea. PFM will do a great presentation on showing you, they'll work with Bill and they'll, here's what the project cost, here's what the budget is, and they will say, here's what, what your cost will be, here's what their cost will be, or the cost of the project itself will be. So, and they do, they do a nice job on that.
As it pertains to the conversation about this year's increase, right, we have to remember that this is a investment legacy, a legacy investment right in the district. So it's not 4% for this year. It's 4% for this year moving forward in perpetuity, right? So if we're going to go less than 4%, that is going to have a material impact on next year's budget. And right now, I mean, I echo the sentiments of Mr. McBain where I am concerned about our investment income, Mrs. Stoll, who is understandably concerned about, you know, the revenue generation from the state and a hyperbolic administration and Department of Education that seems to be wielding threats to cut funding at every turn. I think that this model of taxation, while not very popular, is one of the more stable models, right, when you have it on local property taxes. And I think stability for this district as we're undergoing this project is imperative, not just for our taxpayers, but also for our students and staff. So I am in favor of a 4% increase.
Thank you. And I appreciate the, the presentation this evening, and I think we've talked a lot about the volatility and the concerns, but I think to counter that, some of the things that we've put in place through this budget is that we budget conservatively. Our costs have been reviewed, reviewed and considered and are still coming in lower than county average. Our bond rating, our long-term planning are all things that have helped to, are helping to kind of lay the groundwork to kind of keep, keep us going and keep the projects and everything that we need moving forward despite some potential challenges. So I too lean towards the 4%. Any other comments or questions? And do we need to take action on this, just to move it forward to the next? Okay. So do I have a, yes?
Sorry. Is it, what would be between 3 and 4%? Like what would 3.75 be in terms of, has, would it be possible to get that calculation in terms of what, what could be in between 3 to 4%?
Well, if you wanted to not make any reductions in the current budget, it, it would have to be a, I had that, it's in the office, but by the time I'd go, I can just calculate
I think 3 and 1/2% would be at negative 700,000.
It's, it's closer to 3.8% is what it's going to be, is what.
Is that at 3.75?
Yeah.
But what, what would the increase per house, I'm wondering what the increase per household would be.
And Dr. G does bring up a good point that some of our other meetings too, or in the past, at finance committee meetings, or when we're considering this, we do also look at the cost per household. So maybe we could do that for our June meeting.
Well, we do have that on the right.
May meeting, sorry, thank you.
We do have that on the right-hand side there. That's the average.
Oh, there it is, yeah. I mean, I, I have, I have the slide up for the per household. I'm wondering about the per household increase between 3 and 4% if it were.
It would be like 100 and 70-ish. I have $174.38.
At 3.5 or 3.75?
Seven five.
And 3.75 is where we are net-net zero? Or is that 3.8?
I was just going to clarify, for those watching at home, those average homestead increases, that's a yearly increase. That's not like a monthly increase. So clear.
Yeah, that's a yearly increase. So the 4% would be $15 a month.
I'm, I'm wondering what, Ms. Rudnick was just saying, what, what would it be to be at net zero?
So just, I was using the 3.75, and I'm not this CFO or business administrator, but my math is pretty strong. And I have us, if we did 3.75, just as a, you know, a measuring stick here, we would be roughly 200,000 in the red. Yeah. So it's somewhere in between those two numbers, the four and the 3.75.
I, I think it's a little over 3.8. I just don't have it here, and I'm.
So because I think verbal math is kind of difficult, especially to, to convey to our community, would it be, make sense at our next meeting that we do, we take the different, we take, we remove the items above 3, and we look at 3, 3.5, 3.75, 3.85, and 4? And so we really get into, into the greater, the granular detail at that meeting. Mr. Resch?
I, I would like to point out, this is a nice chart, and we're using this as the baseline, but this baseline has a lot of assumptions based into it. It has our real estate income based into it. It has our, it has our interest rates baked into it. It has our economy staying on a good track baked into it. It has all these things baked into it. And what I think, when Tim made his point and Kathy made her point, is we don't really have a good feel what's going to happen with federal funds. We don't have a good feel for what's going to happen with state funds. We don't know where interest rates are going. We don't know where real estate prices are going to be. So looking at this chart and saying, we're, we're going to only charge 3.75 because it's net zero, it, it really is one biggest assumption. And, and it may be our best assumption at this point in time, but it isn't, it isn't reality. It isn't going to be reality six months from now, and that's why I would agree with the 4%.
I would.
Great summary, thank you.
I would just counter that, the whole, that's what budgeting is, right? So, but I'll also point out that the homestead exemption is supposed to be bigger this year too, I think, right?
I'm getting to that.
That's the next.
That's the next thing.
Right, so that will help offset the tax increase because it's a pretty substantial increase in game.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Stoll. I also just want to comment that, you know, my questions around whether it's 3 and 1/2 or 3.75, you know, I think I'm not asking those questions in order to make assumptions, but that it is our job to ask questions and to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and to, to say, well, what would it be so that, you know, maybe we could make it a little bit less? Because to a single mom who's trying to make it, $20 or $30 can make a difference in your grocery bill. So it's our job to ask questions. And in the end, we may end up at 4% or we may end up at 3% or 3 and 1/2%, but it's important that we ask these questions because the discussion and coming, this should be a hard discussion. We're talking about raising people's taxes, so it should be something that we wrestle with a little bit so that we can all hear each other's perspectives. So I appreciate everyone's perspective. Thank you.
One, one other point I'd like to make. I believe that we're a very fiscally conservative, responsible board and administration, and I believe if everything turns out on a positive for the school board, that would mean next year, we would raise rates less for the taxpayers if things became clearer to the board. So I, I think it gives us room to juggle. Thank you.
And the index is indicating one way or the other, we're probably going to be less. So, yeah.
So just also keeping in mind too, that we have a couple more meetings to work through this process, and we will get into that more granular level detail between the 3 and the 4%. Do I have a motion and a second to move this forward for placement on the May 15th action Motion by Mr. McBain, seconded by Mr. Fusco. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And just, just to be clear, next month, we will come forward with, you know, 3.5, 3.65, 3.75, just to give you more refined difference.
Not next month.
Next week.
Next week.
Yeah, well, but in between May and June adoption of the final.
To keep it, and I did finally, it's 3.83% gets you to like no, no black number. So I wrote a little note for the new CFO to bring you a menu of, of list.
This idea that we can change our mind come June, we can, but my understanding is it's not a particularly good practice. That really May is the number we ought to stick with. As I recall, Mr. Skoraki kind of telling us many, many times in years past.
It depends on, on which way you're going. If you're going down, it's a good practice. If you're going up, it's a bad practice.
But I totally agree, Mr. Linderman, with what Mr. Fusco said because we are working toward a goal. And what Dr. G mentioned about granularity and we're drilled down on the area percentages that we're in, we do not, unless, God forbid, there be something substantial, change our direction. So we are consistent with what we're doing, and we're building our basis and knowledge to come to a. we're building our basis and knowledge to come to a good decision. We don't want to do anything erratic.
Perfect. Thank you.
Just so you know, for next week, then, we will be bringing a budget document, the state budget document. It will show 4%. You may change that, and it will just have to be changed before it becomes a public document, which doesn't have to be public the next day. It has to be public 20 days before you adopt it. So you have a, you know, you have, the business office has a little bit of time. If you don't, 4% is not the number you want. If you want something else to make that change and publish it and be ready for you for June.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our informational items, the 2025-2026 gaming funds distribution.
Okay, the, we did get notice, Dr. Bauer got noticed the other day, last week, last, it was supposed to be Thursday, I think, and Friday, that the gaming funds are up about $713,000. So it's a little over 9% from the current year. The, so this year's exclusion, if you have the homestead, if you're a qualified homestead, it's not everybody. But if you are a qualified homestead, you get a $314 reduction on your taxes for 24-25. For 2025-26, it's a little over $342. So it's, it's about $28 more per homestead. So again, back to, I think it was Mr. Rochus' comments, that those numbers that we showed on the right didn't include the $28 reduction that they will all have for additional homestead money coming from the state. So this is the money from the gaming funds distribution that they set up many years ago. And I'm happy to say, over the past couple of years, they finally given, given increases. It was always a little, little thorn in my saddle that they gave you this one big increase or big number when it first came out, and then for the next, seemed like 15, 20 years, it stayed the same because they were funding everything else that the act allowed them to fund before they started giving more money to the taxpayers. So that's the gaming funds. That's just informational. This will be rolled in. You will see this in the budget document that is brought to you for next week as a number. That number won't change. Well, it may change, but it will only change by pennies as we get notifications from the county on people who we have to pull off because they're now not qualified or something. And we do that right up to the end.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Linderman on this? Okay, moving on to the next informational item, update from our student representatives.
Nothing about finance, but something that is happening in the schools, there's a bunch of elections going on for, there's one for SGA, there's one for NHS, there's a bunch going on. But like, that's just something new.
Is there something big happening on Saturday? Maybe not with you.
There is senior prompt.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your update. Financial reports, Mr. Linderman.
Okay. The first report are the projections, and you can see we're, for 24-25, you actually budgeted a deficit of 185,000.
For 24-25, you actually budgeted a deficit of 185,000. We already know, knew that you were getting an extra million in basic ed funding. Now, compared to the year before, for 23-24, you actually got a million seven more. So it's kind of coming down. And now that we've completed nine months of the year, investment revenue, we've talked about that, it's going to be roughly exceeding budget by a little over 4 million. Real estate taxes are strong. Going to talk about the transfer tax, which I was a little worried about till we got today's transfer tax, and I'll tell you about that in a second. So we're projecting a positive variance for the year of about $12 million. Most of that coming from revenues, 8.6 million. And you heard about 70% of that, what it was, and about 3.9% coming from unspent budgeted expenditures. So that's the projections for that. The, you have your financial reports next. Just interrupting if you have a question. I'll just keep rolling unless somebody interrupts. I don't mind it getting interrupted. So the next is the financial reports. Your about 92.6% of budget compared to 93.5 in your revenues. Earned income was a little light compared to last year. Real estate tax collectives, students are higher. And expenditures are 65% compared to 64% for last year. So, and a big, some of the variance in expenditures has to do with utilities. We did have a pension payment that that will hit in April, that hit in March last year. So that'll probably make the numbers go up a little bit different for the year after, or for next month. Earned income tax report, your collections were a little bit higher than they were the prior year. So we're about 3% higher than we were last year through March. We are at 21 million. It's not that 21 trillion or whatever that number is. I went in to correct that number. I'll correct that. It's 21,750,000 is what you, and 86 is what you ended last year, which was 900,000 higher than the year before. Next year, we're budgeting 22.9 million, and we believe that's still a good number. Realty transfer tax, collections were a little higher in March than they, than they had been in the, in the prior months. Sales have been strong. And we, the comment I made there that even with, with housing sales being slow, we're still expecting to meet the budget. But this year, we got a, or this month, we got a $657,000 really transfer tax, of which more than half of that was for an apartment complex and, Talmanson. So one of, one of the apartment complexes there sold for 70-some, 73 million, I think it was. So we got 365,000 for just one, one sale. So that, actually, that 657,000 puts you way over, not way over, 100,000 over your budget for this year already. So that was, that was that. So investments, we've talked about those, too. I won't spend too much time. You know, you've, you've got some, some decent numbers here, but I will tell you that most of these numbers run out in June, and we'll have to reinvest them. Ms. Hauser is going to have to reinvest them, and the rates are going to be down a little bit. Some of these investments are a little higher than I quoted because they are old investments that were, were put in by Mr. Schrocky beginning of the year. You have the enterprise fund, food service continues to do well. Extended care, school care continues to do well. We are scheduling the repayment of about half of the remaining balance they, they owe the general fund from the loan that the general fund gave them during COVID, so that they could continue to pay their people, even though nobody was here. And community ed, which is much smaller now, because a lot of that stuff has been divvied out, is still doing well with a balance. Short-term capital project forecast, I will call your attention to a new-fangled report. It's got two new columns in it. They'll add a couple of columns there. Ones, one column is for the kind of status of the project, and one column is for the school. And when the project is complete, the next month, we will drop it off to try and keep things a little cleaner with it. So, done. Budget reserve really didn't change much from last month. We will probably see some change in that next month when we have to pay the IU transportation bill. And you have the right to know stuff. So I kind of flew through that. I'll take any questions.
Any questions on the financial reports?
Okay, seeing that, we will move on to public comment. And I'll go ahead and start reading the statement if there's anyone here wants to make public comment. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and municipality. As a reminder, public, the public comment portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters being discussed at tonight's meeting or matters that may become before, may come before the Finance Committee. It is not designated for debate or discussion with members of the committee. When appropriate, committee members may choose to respond to public comments that they, that have been made or requested a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes, and this is in reference to Board Policy 903. Good evening, Mr. Patchell.
Good evening. My name is William Patchell. I live in Montgomery Township. Been coming up, I'm 34 years now. I'm pretty happy now. But in the last waning moments of the ninth inning here, we're running up against all these spending problems. And you know what? With the kind of numbers you're using, I'd book a flight out of Newark, and you can sit around in that terminal for about three weeks trying to get a Burger King to get out of that, out of that airport. Because, well, thinking people in the FAA, gee, I don't know what happened. Yeah, everything's bad. Delta Airlines canceling 30 flights. I thought these were very intelligent people. Ah, they're having a problem at Chef Boyardee. They just sold out for 600 million. I guess that's not going to be on a snack program. So you got to get real with this stuff. I'm going to say it. Stop spending money you don't have. Everybody got that? Stop spending money you don't have. Oh, everybody's face looks like they're really concentrating. I'm glad about that. Okay? Stop spending money. I'm like one of those weather alerts for the tornadoes. Comes across on the TV. They're ruining my show, man. I can't, I can't see what I'm going to do. Now, hey, let's do the new one. There's a couple of people in the back room there going to design things. Hey, you bought any copper? Copper? Yeah, it's $4 a pound. Aluminum, steel, you'll be lucky if you can get it. They have no idea. And you know what? Mr. Summers would probably say, well, that's one of those coat-the-jure things. We didn't have any control over it, and we just can't seem to get the supply. So you'll be hanging out like laundry, waiting to dry. You have no, no, make them sign a thing that they'll complete it, and they'll eat the tariff. I just bought a set of tires. I'll give you a little example. Lucky me, I had one. But when you got an all-wheel drive, you know, they got to be all the same tires? You can't just buy one. You can't buy two. Got to have four. I unloaded $1,000 for Yokohama. Lucky I got the finances to be able to do this stuff. I'm sure some of the hard-pressed taxpayers in Lansdale would find that a little difficult, you know? And then, oh, don't forget the students. Yeah, the defaulted student loans, they're coming into play. And I'm sure that the 94,000 people that live in Montgomery Township, not Montgomery Township, in North Penn School District, oh, I'm sure that every single child that in the last 10 years is right up the snuff on paying his student loans. I'd like to see those numbers. Those parents are furious now because they thought Biden would give him a free pass, get out of jail card. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell.
Jason Lanier Lansdale. Going to kind of pick up where Mr. Patchell left off regarding expenditures. But just a couple of things to lay out. You guys are talking about state budgeting and how it's related to federal grants to the states or federal budget. You realize the federal government, it doesn't have a plethora of money. We're deficit spending now. So all that money comes from everybody in this room and everybody who pays taxes. So it's going there and coming back, and somehow, we're going to some squeeze all this money to, to pay all these bills that we can't afford. So you, the thing that we need to do is reduce expenditure. And I know you guys say, well, we're the fourth lowest or fifth lowest in the county, in the county, but there's economy of scale. This is the largest school district in Montgomery County, right? It shouldn't cost as much. You have, you have a higher concentration of taxpaying taxpayers in order to fund your, your operation. The problem is, is that your operation is costing too much money. So what could you cut and have little effect on education? Number one thing, and we've talked about this before, is the healthcare center. I keep hearing that, oh, somehow we made a million dollars or spent a million dollars less because of the healthcare center? Yet is there quantitative numbers that show that? Or is this just projections based upon how claims would have been should something else have happened? Meaning, they're, they're, they're sales points. They're not actual numbers. And I ran the numbers on this, and it's not that difficult. I mean, 2023, we spent, we had $29 million in insurance premium, 29.6 million in insurance premium. By 2023, we're at 32.7. The whole purpose of the healthcare center was to drive down our insurance premium. The idea was, less people using insurance to do their, their general care would reduce the, the claims and therefore reduce our premiums. Our premiums haven't gone down. Our premiums have gone up. So what, what are we, why are we spending this additional money? We are going to now spend $772,000 this year on the healthcare center and welcome in the tech center people for a fee. We're going to charge them, I don't know how many thousands, and we're going to pay another 150,000 to have them come and use this. What are we doing? We, we are, we are spending money on things that are, that aren't beneficial in terms of cost reduction. We are spending things with the idea, or at least the plan was, it was going to reduce cost, and it has not. So why won't you actually adjust, address that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Dr. Bauer, would you like to respond to the healthcare center item in particular?
To answer the same claims, inaccurate claims about the healthcare center that have been made over the years, Mr. Linderman actually put together a nice synopsis, because he took a look at the healthcare center just to offer kind of a third-party opinion on the matter. And I'll read directly from his analysis, if you don't mind, Mr. Linderman. There have been questions over the past several meetings regarding cost of the healthcare center versus the financial benefit. We'll attempt to describe the correlation between these costs and the avoided costs of our employees who utilize the healthcare center. The center runs through a contract with Marathon Health. The company provides medical personnel in the center and access to low-cost lab work, prescriptions for routine visits and diagnosis. The goal of the center is to reduce costs to our healthcare plan by, one, targeted prevention and wellness, two, reduced absenteeism of our employees, three, managing our pharmacy costs, and four, collaboration with specialists. The cost of the center is approximately $500,000 per year through our contract with Marathon for the physician's assistants, the nurse practitioners, and the medical assistants. Savings comes in the form of cost avoidance with regular office visits and urgent care visits. The average over is $500 per visit when an employee or their dependent utilizes these services. In the first full year of a healthcare, of the healthcare center's existence, we avoided over $1.1 million in claims. And since we are self-funded for these claims, it is a direct savings to the bottom line. We anticipate as more and more staff utilize the center, these cost avoidances will rise as they have in other schools that have healthcare centers in the state. The rate we have budgeted for healthcare premiums for 25-26 is based on a trending model, which incorporates multi-years of experience. So our one-year experience has not made a tremendous impact in terms of those projections, yet future years will include more years of data and eventually help in the long-term trends. We'll have final numbers for this year, obviously coming up here very soon. But that's the analysis. And in regards to North Monco, which I have said a few times, Mr. Lanier, 48% of the budget at North Monco is paid by North Penn School District. They are also a part of the insurance model where they're self-insured. So we pay directly 48% of their healthcare costs. So if they save on their healthcare costs, the North Penn School District saves as a result. So there's the response. But we're saving over $500 a visit for primary care or urgent care at the healthcare center.
Appreciate that analysis, and appreciate you sharing that. So just in summary of our items that will be moving forward to our meeting, our next meeting on May 15, the Small Games of Chance Resolution, budget transfers for March and April, the review of liquid propane gas and maintenance bid results, the realist- of liquid propane gas and maintenance bid results, the real estate tax installment payments, Burckheimer earned income tax resolution, and the 2025, '26 budget. Just a reminder that our next meeting will be on May 15th. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Thanks. Okay, we'll take a few-minute recess and then we'll reconvene. Five-minute recess and then we'll reconvene. Thank you.